My name is Anita Moran. I would like to welcome all of you to the candidates for Lawrence City Council and mayor seats. This event is hosted by the Legal Women Voters of Ory County Members at Large Unit. We may not look it, but we are more than ninety-five years old. The League began with the Women's Self-Ridge Effort and today has chapters around the world. In South Carolina, there are eleven chapters and groups, including Ory and Georgetown Councils. The Legal Women Voters is a nonpartisan group with the core mission of voter services, including voter registration and education. Forums such as this give voters an opportunity to hear firsthand from the candidates themselves. If there are any elected officials here, will you please stand up and identify yourself, please? Anybody now serving?
Our council members are back here to Casey Ward and Turner Furrier. John Goss and Jeff Sonia, they're all serving now.
We appreciate the candidates taking the time to be with us today, as well as their offer of service to our communities. We applaud the voters who have come out tonight to learn about the candidates. The League meets most months on the fourth Monday in Conway at Ryan's for lunch. We welcome you members and we have a table in the back here where you can find out more about our organization. Grace Ham or any of our other members would have to help you. At this time, I'd like to ask all of our League members to stand. As you can see, the League is not just for women anymore. Thank you. We have been handing out cards and pencils for those of you who would like to ask us questions. Please hold your card up if you still have one that hasn't been turned in. We have a limited amount of time and may not be able to cover all the questions, but all candidates who are present will have an opportunity to respond to each question that is asked. This forum will be conducted in a mannerly and orderly fashion, and we anticipate that all those in attendance will listen respectfully. Do not call out, and please hold all applause until the end of this evening's program. To determine if you are able to vote for this race, you can check your new paper registration card, go online to escvotes.org and select your voter information, or call the Voter Registration and Election Office at 915-5440. Information cards with these contacts are available at the back table. Voters should be sure that their address and name have been updated with the Voter Registration Office. To vote, you must be a resident of the City of Lawrence and registered thirty days before the elections within the county. You will be asked to provide ID, which can be a driver's license, a learner permit, a Department of Motor Vehicle ID, a military or military dependent ID, or a passport. Those without these IDs can vote with so-called impediments. Again, we have information available about registration IDs and voter registration contact cards on the back table. Voter IDs are available free at the Voter Registration and Election Office at 1515 Fourth Avenue and Conway on presentation of a new voter registration card for other documents. We have a map that shows the boundaries of the City of Lawrence. The election date for the mayor and city council police is December 1st. Candidates will get two minutes to introduce themselves and make any preliminary points that they choose. At the end of the forum, we will close with an additional two-minute summary from each candidate. Each candidate will get up to one minute to respond to questions. Ernestine will hold up a yellow card when there are thirty seconds remaining and a gray card when time is up. We ask all candidates to respect the time limit. Again, we ask our audience to be good listeners and to refrain from any clapping or commenting during the forum. We serve applause for the conclusion of the forum. We will now proceed with our opening comments from our candidates for City Council. Michael Dozier.
My name is Michael Dozier. I first want to thank the Legal Women Voters for organizing the event. It's pretty refreshing the system's citizens working behind the scenes without much credit to get this information out to the voters. I was born and raised in Lawrence, been here all my life. My family's been here all their lives. I love Lawrence. I'm running for City Council because I love this city. I could not stand idly by and watch poor decision-making after poor decision-making with little accountability in our city government. I'm a husband and a father, first and foremost. My first responsibility and my biggest responsibility is to my family, and they call Lawrence home. So I had to take action at that point. I refuse to explain to my kids when they're older that I stood and watched this city live its way. I spent my entire life, entire adult life, in service to the public as a member of the fire service. I work for the Ory County Fire Rescue. I'm also a member of Lawrence Fire Department. One very certain thing I've learned in that time is there's a level of responsibility that comes along with taking that title of public servant. You must be willing to hold yourself and those around you accountable for every decision made, whether it's big or a small decision. We know Lawrence isn't a large city. It's just not. That by no means limits our potential, but it definitely amplifies the importance that sound fiscal decisions are made every day. Nothing less can be accepted. There has to be accountability from the mayor, council, the city administrator, on down to department heads and employees. This is the only path to success. I fully realize that the citizens that are voting on the second or the first Tuesday in December expect good decisions from me based solely on their best interest. That's the only thing that's going to be accepted. One factor that's present in any successful organization, like I said earlier, is accountability. I will bring this to the City of Lawrence in the role of City Councilman. Our people deserve nothing less than the best. We need to turn over in our leadership in order to make this happen. Albert Einstein once said, "We can't solve problems by using the same kind of thinking we used when we created them." We have to get new people in. Would the people of Lawrence be to stand together?
John Goss, please.
Good evening to everyone, and thank you, Legal Women Voters, for giving us this opportunity to speak and read and grieve. I am a retired educator, thirty-eight years with the Ory County School District, twenty years with Lawrence City Council, and then ten-plus years as a funeral director. So I've seen people at their happiest times, such as graduations, and at their saddest times. I feel qualified to work with the people. I want and make myself available to listen to citizens. Unfortunately, one person cannot change everything. We have to work together as a team, and I look forward to working with a new team, allowing some of our seasoned members. Thank you for this opportunity.
Jeff Sonia Graham.
To the Legal Women Voters, to the citizens of Lawrence, friends, I greet you tonight with a humble heart, and to the citizens, I thank you for allowing me to serve you for three terms. And as I stand tonight, I go back in retrospect when I first ran, when I picked up a newspaper and my daughter had a little article where the news critiqued her, and she said, "My daddy was a good person because he would never lie." So I got shocked, and I thought she shouldn't have put it there, but what I did, I made that my motto. I took how my daughter looked at me, and I said, "It's not whether I'll be politically correct, but I'll do what's best for citizens. I'll do my own thinking, I'll weigh it, I'll base it on it. I'll base it on documents, and then I'll act, and I'll do what's best for the citizens." I thank you for this opportunity, and if I'm re-elected, I'll say to you again, I will not take your vote for granted. I'll do what's best for the citizens of Lawrence. Thank you.
Gary Hardy.
Good evening. Thanks, and I said thank you for having us tonight. First of all, I want to welcome everybody to the biggest thing that Lawrence has accomplished in quite a while, and we're proud to have you. Like I said, my name is Jerry Hardy. I live in Lawrence. I've been here for sixty-three years. I graduated from Lawrence High School. I graduated from Ory Georgetown Tech. I primarily worked in the figure week up here back from seventy-four to eighty-four. I was the district manager there when we were around thirty employees from eighty-four to a friendly time. I'm a residential home builder, contractor for the state of South Carolina. I joined the fire department here in nineteen seventy-four. Shortly after the mayor was elected as mayor, came fire chief. I've been fire chief now for, I think, twenty-two years, twenty-three, and I'm friendly and look forward to working as a citizen back on.
Really, really.
First, I'd like to thank the Legal Women Voters for having this forum in Lawrence, and I would like to thank the citizens for spending their time getting to know us a little bit this evening as well. My husband and I moved here five years ago. We made Lawrence our home after living in many different areas in Ory County, where they came a good time for us to purchase our first home. And we dined and came to the city before we purchased our home, and it was the people here in Lawrence, when we visited many different restaurants and even the bog off before we purchased our home, that made Lawrence special to us. And if you have not read the paper, I'm a teacher. I'm also a career changer. I have twelve years of experience in the business, private sector, corporate world. I have a bachelor's of science in marketing and finance, and my goal is to take the next step and get more involved in our city. My husband is very involved as a Lawrence fireman, and I want to take the next step and be, bring some things and experiences and knowledge that I have to the table to help our city grow. I've been in education for about six years, and before that, my real estate, business management. I've traveled in four different states. I was a regional property manager, supervised over a hundred employees. I did negotiated contracts with utility companies, and that sets me apart from many of the candidates here tonight. I hope to bring some more positive changes. We're sitting in a building tonight, and one of the positive changes that I've seen in our five years of living here, that was a great addition to this city of Lawrence.
Jan Bascovie.
Good evening. My name is Jan Bascovie. I'm a candidate for the City Council. Welcome each one of you here tonight, and thank you, Legal Women Voters, for organizing this. I have been a resident of Lawrence for twenty-seven years. I attended both Lawrence Middle School and Lawrence High School, and I went to Coastal Carolina University, obtained my bachelor's degree in secondary education and English. Then I got my master's degree, and now have obtained my National Board Certification. I feel a great sense of connection and allegiance to this town. A lot of my friends after high school went away to other cities and places, but I just felt that Lawrence has something small-town magical about it. I love the interconnectedness among our citizens, the strong sense of community and the unity that strengthens us as we embrace the future. Many before us have served this city and community with dignity and integrity, and because of their vision and foresight, we have been given a great legacy. And now, as a wife, a mother, and an educator, I desire to serve as faithfully as those before us did. But I feel that now is the time to focus on our future. Working cooperatively, we must invest even more in our children. The young children and the youth must be seen as a priority in our community. We must work together to ensure that we're creating an environment for them with quality programs to help them grow into compassionate and successful productive citizens. Now is the time for us to focus on our future. We must promote and plan for economic stability and growth. We must take the necessary measures to commit that our city will be a safe and nurturing place. We must work together to make that certain, that our public safety leaders have the equipment and the means necessary to keep all of our citizens safe. Now is the time to focus on our future. We must create leadership that is inclusive, collaborative, and connected. The leaders of our community must not function as gatekeepers, but rather as door owners.
Now, if we could have the candidates for mayor, we'll start with Henry Flutten Nichols.
Good evening. My name is Henry Flutten. I'd like my wife to please stand up, Vida. Vida is also my campaign manager, so she needs some praise. I was born here in Lawrence, but I went away to go to college, and I spent twenty years in Marine Corps. I recently ranked a lieutenant colonel. I'm a logistics officer. I later used the GI Bill and I received my master's in business administration in nineteen eighty-two, so it's still a long time. I held positions like I was a chief financial officer for the State of Maryland with the State Department. I managed a budget that was largest one point eight billion dollars. We did one point two billion in grants, and I also annually do over eight hundred billion in procurement. Some of the other things I've done, I have been a professor at a university where I taught business and finance, and I've been administrator at a university for business and finance and athletics. I would bring a wealth of knowledge to the City of Lawrence. I'm committed to being a full-time man. I'm retired. I'm a senior citizen. Vida and I have four children, and we have two lovely grandbabies, and I look forward to meeting with you and talking to you prior to the election because I want to see exactly what you want in terms of a mayor, and I have a listening ear. So thank you very much. I know I have some time, but thank you.
Dr. George Frasch.
Welcome, friends, neighbors, distinguished guests. My name is Dr. George Frasch, and I am currently running for the office of mayor. As a local business owner and former president of Lawrence Chamber of Commerce, I understand the need for economic growth, for revitalized infrastructure, and the importance of a strong public safety department. As mayor of Lawrence, I will be fully committed to developing a city plan which will include goals for our town focusing on essential city services, parks and recreation, stormwater management, budgets, and public safety. However, if we are to improve and increase our economic stability and town appearance, we must be completely devoted to a long-range plan for the City of Lawrence. One of the goals are set, placed, and focused. Strategies can be implemented in order to make these goals a reality. We, the citizens of Lawrence, must unite as one community and do our best to plan for future generations. As mayor, I will encourage the community to localize their views and opinions during the development of this plan, so that the vision is an accurate reflection of the citizens' desires, needs, and goals. This plan must include a comprehensive economic strategy that involves increased efforts to recruit manufacturers and small business entrepreneurs, promote our existing businesses, and utilize creative solutions for the redevelopment of current commercial downtown vacancies. Furthermore, we need to improve the city's shapes of the city to provide a welcoming atmosphere that suits merchants' needs and ensures public accessibility. By developing a city plan, we will be able to experience economic growth and prosperity. As mayor, I will also make my immediate goal to secure qualified, full-time personnel for essential administrative positions in City Hall, so Lawrence can operate in an efficient manner, and will also commit to resolve the problems concerning the water and sewer community. However, in order for us to make educated and wise decisions regarding this system, we must acquire detailed research and accurate appraisals. In order for these goals to be accomplished, the new mayor will need to demonstrate an ability to work with City Council, listen to constituents, and exercise professionalism and sound judgment when performing the duties of office. I believe I can fulfill those requirements and represent our city well.
Michael Douggs.
Thank you all for coming tonight. I've served on City Council now for twenty-two years. During that time, I've tried my best to learn about every operation the City of Lawrence is engaged in, every day operations in the city, long-range plans, everything that is involved in city government. I attended educational courses in that regard to try to increase my knowledge, but one day I had a goal of serving as your mayor. If elected mayor, I can promise you that I will always listen, take your concerns seriously, and the door is always open. There are several of you in the room now that have been in my office to talk to me about various things over the last actually several months and several years, and you know where I am, right down the street, easily accessible. With the City Council, with works together, we can accomplish all those meetings here in Lawrence. And we've accomplished a lot in the past. We've got a bright future ahead of us, and many things that we can make happen in this year. Economic development is one thing. We've got a new industry coming to Commerce Center right now, so the city is working with Old Beach Regional Economic Development, and there are other sites available in the Commerce Center. We could get some industry in here, and get some good jobs with good salaries. It would be good for the downtown merchants, and things will grow downtown. We can work with the Chamber of Commerce to try and market our downtown to retailers and businesses if they want to locate here, and again, working together as a team to listen, roll the open, as I said, and look forward to possibly serving as your mayor for the next four years.
Thank you. We will now begin with our questions, which have been reviewed for redundancy and for appropriate content by our question selectors, Judy Floyd and Harold Howison. The questions will be read by Maggie Thompson, which can make the City Council, as well as mayor, will have one minute to respond, and we will begin with Michael Dozier.
First question is, what kind of bargaining power do we have if we sell our water to Grand Strand?
That's definitely a hot button topic, the sale of our water system to Grand Strand. First of all, I know that we don't have all the facts yet. I know they're doing appraisals right now to get an actual value of our current water system. My biggest issue with our water system currently is that we've shown ourselves, at least in some regard, incapable of maintaining the water system. Several fire hydrants out of service, water lines bursting on a regular basis because they're so antiquated. So I definitely think we need to get more information on it, but I am for the sale if we can't maintain it properly.
As I understand the question you asked about our bargaining power, and I think that our bargaining power comes in the fact that we are very near debt-free. Within a couple of years, we will be debt-free, our own water system. So I think that's a great bargaining power, and which we are doing research, meeting with the citizens that have done this, and talking to citizens, gathering all the facts, so we can make a good decision.
Mr. Graham.
Bargaining power, when you have assets, you always have some bargaining power. Our water sewer is an asset, and when you're talking about the things that our water sewer is experiencing, in a small town, no matter where you look across the state and other states, all small towns will have the same problem, because number one, it's an expensive system. So when we look at our water sewer, sometimes when we look at citizens, they look at the water bill and reducing that water bill. Well, we do want to bring that water bill down and make it reasonable, but at the same time, if our water bill comes up and tapping fees go up triple or double, then your fee may not necessarily be as cheap as you think it is. So the water system is an asset. When it's gone, it's gone. So then we need to make sure that if we sell that system, that we get the best deal for our citizens, and we can do all that we need to do to ensure that the city operates efficiently.
Mr. Hardy.
Lawrence is by far one of the biggest assets that the city has, could also control your growth or building and structuralizing down the road for future development. I have to say, I've been to a couple of meetings, committee meetings that have been going on. I think Councilman Ward is doing a fine job. I think approaching it, talking away, trying to get all the possible information that we can, make sure that we make the best decision when that day comes, because the final decision will be put to the public, whether or not you will sell it or not. I don't think there's anyone in here that's jumping on the Lawrence water bill, but by far, we've got to be very careful because, like I said, it's the biggest asset, and once we do sell it, we're not going to be able to go back sixty days later and say, "I may have proved a wrong act for that one."
I don't want to repeat, but that has been our topic. I myself have attended a committee meeting. The members of council and mayor that were at that meeting were gathering excellent information. It was even excellent for me to hear. I wanted to see what kind of process they were going through as a current candidate. I had heard in those meetings that we would not have as much bargaining power bringing businesses and more economic development into Lawrence, because we can reduce certain impact fees and water fees, and that is a concern. Ms. Goss said that we are going to soon be debt-free, but I would like everybody to know that I don't know how long it will be before we have to go into more debt to maintain the current system that we have, so I don't know how long we will be debt-free, because we've got lots of things that are not working.
Like I've all said, there are pros and cons to keeping the system versus selling the system, but debt-free, bringing in the new businesses, the income that it brings to the cities through the fees, but for the citizens, one of the main concerns I've heard is the water quality, the water pressure, maintaining the current facilities that are in place. So there are probably, and I'm not currently part of council, things that need to be improved with that, and fees that will come along with that, and I know Mr. Ward said that they were looking at having a nonpartisan group come in that's not connected with either Grand Strand or the City of Lawrence to help evaluate that, and I would think that would really need to be looked at before the city made an informed decision regarding that.
Mr. Nichols.
My background is that the largest contract that I've negotiated was one hundred twenty-five million for the State of Maryland, so I have that background. I think it's early in the stage, and we need to collect more facts and also get some experts to sit on those boards with us to help us make some decisions. This is a valuable asset, and I think we need to have people at that table that can advise us so we can make some good decisions, and I think this supports my background and the things that I've done in my career.
Dr. Frasch.
Yes. After speaking with Councilman Ward and the city engineer, we are well in the way of determining a value to our asset. It is truly an asset to our city. We need more further information, as I said. However, as many have said on this board, once it's gone, it's gone, and how do we replace that revenue stream? I believe that with care and diligence, we can repair and replace the proper dysfunctional items and maintain and build our water system and grow that asset instead of potentially giving it away or selling it away, not giving away, but selling that asset and losing that potential revenue stream. However, it will come up to a referendum vote once all decisions have been done, so it will be the people's choice eventually. So right now, we need to just let the council work to do their due diligence, to find the correct answers, to get a better kind of appraisal, and then we can all make an informed decision.
Mr. Douggs.
To use the phrase we use in the legal profession, the jury is still out on that question. We have started the process to evaluate the pros and cons of a possible sale of the system, but we're early in those talks. The system will have to be appraised, the value will have to be determined, and we will have to negotiate with a potential buyer to afford it. It could be a potential sale. It is an asset, and as most of the panel up here have said, once the water gets gone and you can undo it, so it's a very important decision, whether you've got to gather information on that and make the best decision that you can for the future of Lawrence, whether it is to sell it or to keep the system and repair it. But at this point, as I said, the jury is still out, and we've got to...
But at this point, as I said, the jury is still out, and we've got a lot of research to do to make that determination.
Thank you. When you answer these questions, would you please stand up so the people in the back can see?
If you'd like to, would you push for incentives from the solid waste authority to promote curbside or bulk recycling within the city?
Oh, that's definitely something that's not really available right now. We do have recycling centers outside the city limits, but obviously there's no incentive to use them other than burning gas to get out there. That's definitely something that potentially would push people to recycle more. And we know, you know, the earth is not getting any younger, so we've got to take care of the place. And so I'm definitely for incentives for citizens to recycle.
I personally enjoy the curbside recycling, and I was pretty efficient with it. So certainly, I would like to look at incentives that might allow us to have that opportunity again.
If I'm reelected, we have had recycling before with our waste system. And we can do recycling again. When we dropped recycling, I think we were looking at it as how cost efficient it was and whether or not it was to our advantage. And the information we got at that time and the cost, we felt like it was best not to do that. There has been some concerns about going back to that, even with our present company. If we want to do that, we can do that. So we can look at that in the future, and if that's what citizens want, and come back to recycling area.
I've probably been recycling myself, but I can remember when we had it, and it didn't work very well. It was definitely a cost issue. We had a lot of people that used it very well, and then we had a lot of people just didn't care for it. A lot of information needed to be brought forth to see what the cost of the waste should be again. So right now, you know, that's kind of a way that we need to probably lean in and be doing, like helping the public to do it.
I'm currently a recycler. I use the solid waste authority area that we have. Some of my property management experience can help me answer this question. It's twofold. I've seen it work very well in communities that took the time to do it. But depending on the type of curbside container, you could have some spillage. You could have trash and things like that blown into the driveways and into the roads. And so that could create more, you know, more things and more methods for our city employees to worry about, you know, taking away from their other job duties. And then also, if we look at our current waste disposal company and adding that service, that's also tied to our water bill. So I wouldn't want for our citizens to think that, what if we do do something or make a decision with the water bill and we do lower rates when the debt goes down, then you would think that the bill didn't go down, that that increases the cost.
Obviously, there has been a cost for that program when we had it previously. Previously, I was a participant in that. Then it was done away with, as my understanding was because of costs. However, a couple of years ago, an owner of a local business questioned, it was a new local business, why we did not currently have that. I think it is a great need for the community. My child, when he was in elementary school, would take things and recycle monthly there. I try to promote it in my classroom. I think the number one object is if we do operate into our citizens to let them understand that it will impact the water feed, but also to educate them about the importance of it, how to recycle, what the procedures are. I feel like a lot of the citizens weren't fully aware of how to go about the recycling process, which may have limited the number of participants in the town. But I think it will be a great opportunity for the city to look at that again.
I think a lot of states and a lot of cities have gone green. We must know the value of it, but also we have to educate the public. There is a cost associated with it, but we have to think in terms of our brand. This is something that we have to look for the future, because this is what we have to do. And it pays dividend in the long run, and we have resources that are being tapped every day. So we have to look at it, we have to look at the cost, and we also have to educate the public. That's not something that we can see right now, but we have to look for our brand, maybe it's an idea. This is a thing that we have to really plan and map out and have a strategy for.
Cleanse vanishing is a concern of every city, every town, every state. We only have limited capacity in our landfill here in Ori County. It always comes down to, and not in my backyard issue, of placing a new landfill. So we have to look at ways to maximize the use of that. And if recycling helps to prolong the use of our landfill, then we as a city should potentially look at that as an option of being a responsible citizen. And if it is something that the citizens want, then we as the city council and mayor, we should look at ways to make that happen in an affordable and a reasonable manner.
I am a recycler. Those of you that know me know that I recycle everything that I absolutely can. I see some smiles on the floor. Most of you that know me know that I recycle. I think it's a good thing. I thought it was a good thing when the city had code signed recycling a few years ago. But what happened was citizen participation got so low that it became cost prohibitive to continue that program. We tried to educate the citizens, and for whatever reason, the participation just got so loaded, you cannot possibly do it again. And if we can find some ways to do it, and solid waste authority is willing to offer some incentives to help us cover the cost of that, absolute. I believe we should recycle if we can and reduce what we send to the land. That will help the city overall as well, because if we reduce the amount of trash we're taking to the landfill, it reduces tipping costs. And therefore, it uses the cost to the city and that passes through to the individual citizens. So yes, if we can get some incentives in place and solid waste out, absolutely, we should do something.
Next question, please.
I think this question is sort of redundant, but it's directed to the mayor. What are you going to do about the transportation bill? They want to know. Some detail already. They want to know what you can do about it.
For clarification, is that a billing process?
The bill itself is somehow, that's what they're saying. It's a transportation and garbage bill.
You're just telling me the monthly bill is a whole, because I know we have transportation.
Ride Two is a roads program that Lawrence residents pay into. Are you satisfied with the results of Ride Two? And would you support more tax with the adoption of Ride Three?
I didn't hear the beginning of the question.
Ride Two is a roads program that Lawrence residents pay into. Are you satisfied with the results of Ride Two? And would you support more tax with the adoption of Ride Three?
As I understand, I believe that's a county tax that we pay. And some of it may come into Lawrence, but I don't know if everybody saw the news here recently. The county just took a great deal of money out of that fund to buy a new digital radio system for public safety. So I can't say that I definitely support it, since they're not necessarily using all that money for the roads. And we do have, you know, some road issues in our town. Our town is definitely not as bad as some other cities are. But I'm not sure all that money is actually coming back to the roads. I can't say that I support it.
I also understand that the state will have some funds that they may be able to appropriate for roads. Certainly, we do need road improvement. There's no doubt about that. The potholes have just flourished lately. And we needed improvement for a while now, and it's not been done satisfactorily. So I would not support that, because we do need road improvement.
While I'm thinking, the road fund is an opportunity or a way that that money that the county takes up comes back to the city. And as we meet as a League of Cities, we also talk about those things. And I think, yes, it did take out some of the money to take the radio system. But that wasn't decided by the council. As a League of Cities, we came together and we made those decisions. And I think those reasons were made because we had to go through the new system. And there was not the money to do that, but we had to move to that new system. And that was a way that all of the smaller cities could do that. So that was the best thing to do. But we will and we must have some kind of mechanism to allow that money to come back to our city and to build our roads. We may not have a problem with roads now, but if you live long enough, roads are going to get bad, and we have to repair those roads. So I do feel that, while it's taxes, we pay the lift taxes, but I would say we've got to do what we've got to do to make sure our roads are efficient.
Can I ask you a question? Would I do for a new tax? I would say no, because my main reason is I don't think we seem like we get our fair share of those paid in Lawrence. I think all of the rundown Wallhut Street lately, there's some that have been on top of the list. But I'm a firm believer, if you tell me without putting any sales tax on something and just what it's for, you stick with it. Being in public safety, I probably should be for giving all that money to the county to buy radios, but I'm not, because of my question. Also, if they're buying all of you radios for the county, where does that leave us? Because the fire department alone here is looking at close to $100,000 just to upgrade the mobile radios in our district. We were recently turned around with grants. We're in the process, surely we'll be refinancing, hoping we'll be able to get that.
It is my understanding as well that the Ride to the Roads program is a county tax that we pay here in Lawrence. I don't know that I would be in favor of the Ride to the Roads three, that was the question?
Yeah.
Because I don't think that we get our fair share either. However, I recently dealt with a painting issue in front of my home. And in that, dealing with that situation, I found out that there were meetings with, that we need to help promote more healthy relationships with interagencies like the SCDOT. There were previous meetings on the painting issue in front of my home that Lawrence was not represented at. No one was there. There was three different meetings. There was a meeting this past Tuesday night in Conlang on two different roads that are going to be set to be paved or awarded through the state and county here in Lawrence. And I was not able to make that meeting, so I'm not sure if Lawrence was represented.
It's my understanding that the money that was used or is looking at being used for the radios is possibly some excess funding that they were anticipating above what they needed for the road project and that the road project, the term, the project length for that, the timeline for that, was going to be so great that they felt the need to use those funds to upgrade the system and that by the time they get to the stage where those funds would be needed, that money would be replenished. Maybe that's understood with that. I also understand that the northern Ori County area, our area, that we did have representation of that meeting. I think Frankie Blanton is on that committee and that he was there. I do think our roads throughout Lawrence, in the city limits and outside the city limits, you know, suffer damages, potholes, there are things that need improvement. It takes money to do that. The people who are on those committees will have to look at that and make those decisions and work with other organizations to meet the needs that we have.
As a finance officer, you always want to make sure you get your bankroll up. But in the community meetings where I talk to you, there were a couple of things that you wanted. One is that you wanted proofing of the road sidewalk, the need repair of the fire hydrants. Unfortunately, we had flooding, we have some families that were affected. In fact, we're going to look into some things like some prior parties that I have. I had one citizen who lost his wife because he was on a road that I think the speed was 30 miles an hour. And the person hit his wife at going, I think, at the excess of 80 or 90 miles an hour. It requested speed bumps. We needed speed bumps. So those are some of the things in our, in my administration, I'm going to look at. Roads, sidewalks, some speed bumps, and we have some areas that we have flooded. And although we have it, it's a blessing that those things happen so that we can look into those issues.
I believe roads are crucial to the growth and development of our region across the county, in our city. A 1% sales tax is something that, on paper, for some people may be quite great, but I think for the betterment of our community as a large, I would be in favor for an increased net. Anytime we can show that we're making substantial structural issues or our infrastructure, that's always going to help make a good light shine upon our community and bring in potential new business, bring in potential new money to be spent here in our town. And if we can have a good roads agreement, I believe a one cent or one penny increase would certainly be something that we should look into.
The Ride Initiative is a county tax that the county council will have to deal with and implement. The city council is powerless in that regard to address the penalty tax for the roads. I too was a little perplexed when I saw the article in the paper the other day that the county had all this excess money that they were rolling into radios, where it was money generated from the one penny tax for the purpose of roads. But that, again, that's the county council's decision, how they arrive at that, I'm not sure. But like probably most of you in the room, I do feel like sometimes we get short change in this end of the county on certain projects. We have road things up here as great as anywhere else in the county, road maintenance needs as much as anybody. And the majority, probably 98% of the roads in the city of Lawrence within our corporate limits are either county maintained roads or state maintained roads. There are roads that are owned by the city of Lawrence, the maintenance is worked up to the state and the county. And if the county fathers can see fit to direct that money in our area, we should urge them to do that.
Next question, please.
How can you even the landfill so that local small businesses can make a go of it despite the proponent national change?
I'm not real sure that we have any choice in national change coming in, because I really don't see big national change coming into the city limits. Obviously, we don't have as much control of what goes on outside of our city limits. We can definitely offer incentives, tax incentives, things of that nature, to boost local small town businesses and boost people going to them. We need to encourage our people to shop in Lawrence. We need to just continue to support our Chamber of Commerce, give them what they need to do their jobs.
I think our Chamber of Commerce does a great job. They're genuinely interested in bringing in local businesses and keeping local businesses. So we need to continue to support our Chamber. There are some incentives that we as mayor and council may be able to offer. Once again, we are limited, and for what we can do about the national change, I'm sure there's a limit to that as well. But let's continue to support our Chamber of Commerce and support our local businesses.
When it comes to national change, I think we have to realize that those things are coming. Change in itself makes things grow. Change in itself makes things grow and other things coming. But our local businesses, our small businesses, in all towns, they suffer. That was one of the reasons we have the downtown revitalization, to keep businesses downtown, to keep things going. That's the reason we took the trees and look at. As I go through all of these educational functions in other cities, they're doing a lot of stuff downtown to bring people back downtown, that they can walk, they can shop, they can eat, and this is to keep the small businesses alive. If we look at the history of Lawrence, small businesses, mom-and-pop businesses, has been a jewel to our town, and that still can be a jewel. All we have to do is promote our downtown and encourage more local businesses, our own businesses to come, and we can make it.
I don't know exactly what Lawrence can do to, you know, get the big chains to come. I'm president of the serve on the board of directors for the Chamber of Commerce, and you know, that's one of our main goals is everybody's meeting is what can we do that will help bring and foster Lawrence, and that's our main goal. And we will continue to do that, and I don't know exactly who's coming, but I've got a phone call today, they're doing a thing tomorrow. We've got one of the downtown stores that's been vacant for quite a while, they might get moved still.
I think that they've done a lot of good things, our forefathers, our first council people, the downtown revitalization. It's part of what made us move here five years ago when we purchased our home. There's not much, I don't see encroaching businesses inside the city, national chains inside the city, but they may come outside closer to where we are in the city. Other cities or municipalities in the state and others that I've worked with in four different states, they did First Fridays, Third Thursdays, and they worked with the Chamber of Commerce, it's to bring more people in and downtown, and put the work with the community, small business owners, and get something like that together, and figure out how to fund something like that with the Chamber of Commerce. That would definitely help our small businesses in the city of Lawrence.
I think it all boils down to a balance. I don't think you can keep national chains out. There are going to be some that our citizens are going to want for the products or the cost effectiveness. But I think a lot of our local businesses have also worked diligently to hear the citizens and hear what kind of products that we want and how to bring those in. I know Walfords and Moore's drug store in the last few years have expanded what they offer to our citizens. So I think it's all about balance and working with the chamber and working with city and other ways to promote the awareness of what is available so that people don't travel to outside areas, and just more awareness. I hear that from a lot of people, not knowing what's available, knowing, you know, Mr. James said great about getting in products that some of the teens and the younger people have been interested in. Miles Bailey at the drug store really worked hard on that. So I don't know about incentives to keep them out, but more about balance for community.
I support local businesses, and as mayor, I would like to set up regular meetings and also establish a very good working relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. I had the fortunate, I was very fortunate to meet with the county on the community block grants, to see other cities that brought business back into the city, because you know, you have a lot of cities now that are drying up, and they have programs and monies, and they would help us to apply to those grants. And her name is Ms. Diane Sadarsky. She is the director of that agency, and I've had the opportunity to work with her for two years. And we talked on these things, and there are block grants that they would help us get to help fund small businesses and also to work on the side, on the outside of the building. You've seen neighborhoods of businesses when you're in a community, and it's kind of resembles each other in terms of the overhead, but there's monies available for that, and she would help us to get those grants.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am a small business here in town. I have ten years in small business here in town. I've served eight years on Chamber of Commerce as board director, twice as acting president of Chamber of Commerce. I understand what it means to be a small business. I understand what small businesses need to be productive. As part of my plan for mayor, that will be a key factor, is growth and development of not only small business entrepreneurs, but also to continue to work with Myrtle Beach Regional Ethanol Development Group to bring in continued large manufacturers like we have coming into our industrial park here with stainless steel and accent stainless steel. So we need to promote growth in all aspects of town, so that would be one of my key focuses as mayor, to continue to develop and bring incentives for not only small business and big business, because frankly, we need both. Thank you.
I think the question asked about the national chains and keeping it, I guess, paid out of the city, and I don't think you can do that, and America is a free enterprise system, and businesses can locate whatever they feel like they may. So there's nothing we can do to stop that. We do need to promote our town, promote downtown. One of the ideas I had was to work with the Chamber of Commerce and market our downtown, develop a database of vacant buildings in town, or vacant commercial properties, being a vacant lot suitable to build on. Assemble a database, assemble facts about our town, and market our town to potential small businesses, be it regional chains or national chains or just small mom-and-pop businesses. We could work together to do that and entice some of the folks to come to town. There are programs that other small towns have participated in, some information in my office regarding some case studies from several small towns across the southeast, where they've done wonderful things with downtown, and we could look into that to make the downtown viable.
Next question, please. What is your plan for all the downtown properties and absentee owners?
We already have a plan in place. The council, a few months ago, I know posted in the local papers the list of dilapidated buildings and gave them a timeframe in order to fix whatever their situation was, whether it be a roof falling in or the yard being unkept or whatever that was. We need to hold the people accountable to that. We don't need to go away from it. We definitely don't need to run property owners out of town by any means, but we need to do whatever we have to do. We need to enforce our current ordinances and our current regulations and make people take care of their property. That's one of the reasons, going back to the economic development and things like that. If you just drive down any main drag of our city, there's several vacant businesses, vacant homes, vacant lots that are growing up, and that stuff is not shining a favorable light on the city for new people coming in, whether it be residents or potential business owners.
The city of Lawrence is... I'm sorry.
You can ask it for me. We've worked quite diligently in the last few years, trying to get property owners, absentee property owners to clean up their lots and clean up their buildings. We've made some progress. We're not where we want to be. We have some sites that still need the attention of the owners. It's a sort of balance, because there are things that the city can do to go ahead and clear the lots, but it would take on an expense that the city may or may not ever get back. So in trying to keep things economical, that's why it seems to get stalled sometimes and progress stops, but we are certainly anxious to seek grants. We look at some grants, talk to other people. When we go to the state municipal meeting, we talk to people there from across the state about what they're doing with dilapidated buildings and residents. So that's really a sore point, and we have a lot of passion for getting that done.
Since I've been on council, we have done quite a bit with dilapidated buildings. We first started out, we adopted a program, I think Mudd's had. And what we did at that time, we just asked citizens, if you have an old building, if you gave us permission to come on your property, and we used our help, we tore it down, we moved it out of the way, and we just asked that those properties be kept up. We had a lot of citizens to do that. We've become a little more aggressive. We begin now to contact those people. We've got some people who have air properties, and when you've got air property, that's a problem, because you've got so many people involved. And then we have some that wants to fix their house, but because of the poor economic situation, they don't have the money. So we try to be lenient and give them the opportunity, but we are being more aggressive and asking them to renovate or remove the property, and if not, we will take actions to move that. But we want to keep the property if we possibly can, because that's the tax thing, but we are moving to clean up the city.
Kind of beat on the same stick that a fellow said, the city's going about it the right way. They've compiled a list of properties that we consider to be outsourced, that need to be updated, or either get engineers to look at them and see whether or not even need to keep the tour down. But like I said, it's a lengthy battle of having to contact them, and like I said, we've got a lot of places that are looking left to the air, and you've got to contact them, that's the worst thing there is, is having to spend money to upgrade something here. The last thing the city wants to do is to be out there cleaning up and having to put a lien on the property, because that is very costly and it is a long time to get it back.
Dealing with private property that's privately owned, there's not so much that the city council or the city can do. I am aware of the list that's been made, and we have resources that we can use. Of course, you want the tax money, but we have a volunteer fire department that can help take dilapidated buildings down. That would not be that much costing city residents. You can also get more aggressive and implement ordinances that would charge fines to these residents. If you've gone and you've done all of your diligence to try to communicate with them for a record amount of time, a separate amount of time, then of course, the next thing is if you get into people's pockets, then usually you get more action. So I don't know that the city council can look at making the ordinance to charge fines for those properties that are not taken care of after twelve months. That's a reasonable amount of time.
I think most people have expressed similar ideas, that there's a process that citizens may not be fully aware of, that you have to go through to complete that. I'm sure that the city is working to address all the issues and work with those people to make those improvements, obviously looking for other sources of funding to help with that when those need to be enforced. I don't necessarily know if fines would be the best issue, because probably if the buildings are dilapidated, the owners may not have the funds to make the improvements, so adding more fines isn't necessarily going to take it out any faster. But just again, working, taking in both sides, the cost it would take to tear down things versus what, like you said, if you're able to get the funds back or not, you have to look at all aspects of that.
At this stage, I think we should continue with the list, but moving forward, we have to understand that if we're going to regulate something, it has to be fair, it has to be... you've got to be able to execute or regulate it, and we have to take those things into consideration, the financial impact to the city. But as far as, I think as mayor, we just continue to go on and use the list, but moving forward, we have to take these things into consideration, because it has to be fair, it has to be, you have the ability to regulate it and execute it, whatever we have to do, and the impact, the financial impact it'll have on the city. So we have to do those things before we start moving to move property and knock property down.
I believe this is a co-concursant issue. I believe we have rules that are in place already on books. I believe we are doing sound things to move this process along, but I think as council and mayor, these are one of those tough decisions that you are electing us to do, to decide that that property must come down or this property must stay, for the good of the citizens that are holding. We are here because you put us here, to make those decisions, and if it is a betterment to the city to take that down, I believe we should take that cost on. We have the means to do it, and that will only help promote the well-being of our city in the long run.
The process is in place, the ordinances are in place, and the city has compiled the list of dilapidated properties, and there's been some good progress over the last couple of years, removing those structures. There are some that are still in place that we would all like the city to clear it up, but you get to the point that folks won't do it on their own, then the city has to determine, is it worth it to the taxpayers to take down that dilapidated structure? Because the cost of demolition is going to be borne by the taxpayers of Lawrence. If you have a building that has perhaps asbestos or something like that in it, and the cost of demolition is going to be tremendous, that's going to fall back to the taxpayer. Ultimately, the city could do that and may have to resort to that if we can't get the property owners to go ahead and demolish their dilapidated properties. Of course, the property is able to be repaired, certainly the owners, and many have been cooperative, they have repaired their properties. Mechanism is in place to remove the dilapidated properties.
Next question, please. North Myrtle Beach is engaged in developing offshore wind energy. What steps can Lawrence take to develop alternative energy like wind and solar?
Well, North Myrtle Beach has one thing that we don't have, is that ocean corolla. That kind of limits our potential with the wind energy, but definitely, we could offer tax incentives for the solar energy, and not only will the business owners, residential owners, things of that nature, not only will they have that cost-saving in having the tax incentive, they'll also have the cheaper energy. Their electric bills will go down, which in turn could funnel right on down to the citizens and potentially lower prices on their products, things like that.
That's a topic that we would certainly need to do much research on, and the person at the end of that question, and others who are willing to volunteer some of their professional expertise, who would certainly like to help you on committees of campus research.
My thirty years as an educator, my three turns on the city studying certain things, I've seen that the energy situation is changing rapidly, and there are constantly studies out there, developing more and more studies. We don't have an ocean, but Santee Cooper is looking at doing, pulling the energy from the garbage area. So as we move along as a city, there are things that's going to develop. There are things that are developing that we may be affected by here at Lawrence, and I'll just say that as we go along, we will keep our eyes open on those things and then tap in to those green energies and all those energies that can benefit Lawrence.
I don't see a whole lot of windmill coming to Lawrence. But definitely need to keep our eyes and ears open for any type of energy that we can handle with down the road.
Not going to be the dip horse. We don't have the breeze for the... I was involved in a project where an entire community, this was about ten years ago, did give silver. It was very expensive and did require a lot of research, and I am for all of that, but I think that that would take some time, and I think that the city of Lawrence has many other priorities right now to fix before taking on extra time for that venture. I think that eventually, some sort of committee for the city of Lawrence to turn green with the LED lights and work with Santee Cooper and that agency to make our city more economically efficient, because there's two things that are going up and we can't control, is power and water. We can't control the cost of that. So I think that's something definitely that we have to look into, but we have a lot of things on our pot and in our plate right now, and we need to look at those first.
I don't think any of us are up here experts in this field, so I think that's our bone guard, but you know, if in the future... But, you know, if in the future, if that's something citizens want to look at, um, like Kimberly said, I don't think that's most of the citizens' priorities. I don't think that's their biggest concern right now. Um, but obviously you have to do a lot of research, um, and possibly look into some grant opportunities. And that's all I can say about that.
I think it sounds like a great idea. And when it comes out, I'd like to have first one of them fall in my yard.
We may not have these large assets or resources, but what we each have is a home. We can learn ways to be more energy efficient at home. Energy efficient electric panels, energy efficient appliances, energy efficient windows. We can work with the community, with developers, with Santee Cooper, to find ways to bring costs down for each individual wanting to be right here in their home right now. We don't need to reinvent a, a new energy source for our community. We can each be conscientious in our homes and collectively we can bring our own bills down with that type of focus.
Alternative sources of energy are great. I feel like that. And I like to do about recycling. We can develop those in our nation. We need to do that. However, the issue of wind energy in Lawrence is far above our local council to deal with. And that's something that's something quite entrepreneurial, what we better suit and do in conjunction with perhaps Santee Cooper. But it would be great if somebody were to tackle that challenge and provide an alternative source of energy.
Another question, please. Do you believe Lawrence should annex more areas to follow within city limits? Why? Yes or no?
Uh, dealing with annexation, I think it's got to be looked at, uh, issue by issue. Uh, obviously, it's got to be cost effective. It's going to, it's going to increase the tax base, which is definitely a plus for us. But in turn, we will then have to provide services to that area. So we have to look at, are we going to bring enough tax base in annexing a specific area? In, in order to in turn pay for the increased cost to provide service to that, that area? Whether it be fire department, police department, sanitation, city water, uh, whatever it may be. There's, there's going to be a cost incurred by the city and by the citizens in turn by annexing. So it's definitely going to have to be a situational, uh, based issue. You're going to have to look at each situation when it comes up for annexation or if somebody wishes to be annexed or if we decide there's an area that we wish to annex.
We certainly welcome those who are interested in annexation. And it's an individual, personal decision. Um, we haven't had quite a lot of that recently. I have a lot of annexation issues, but we're not welcoming those who do want to. And as he just said, you know, that brings up the services that we are obligated to provide to the citizen as well as keep the tax base of the citizen who is subject to that. Plus, it's a sort of a balance.
Annexation is a way to grow our city. And as we go along, we will be annexing, annexing as we do now. We do not want to annex faster than we can keep up with the growth that accommodate those services that we need to accommodate. And then by law, as we annex, there are certain things we have to do to make sure we have a balance. If when you're annexing, uh, it comes to rich and poor, the law requires us to do certain things to make sure that you can benefit this group as well as that group. So annex is a way to grow our city. But as we annex, we want to be able to meet the needs, bring the infrastructure that we need to, to, um, make those citizens, um, give those citizens what they need. And then we want to make sure that as we grow our city, we're growing it for every, every person. Thank you.
Annexation is, um, kind of a hard topic. Uh, first of all, I think we all need to talk to our legislators and get the law changed. Uh, looking at your map out there, we've got several areas in town and we are a completely surrounded place. Uh, I personally think they should be made to come into town, uh, like the state of North Carolina. When they decide there's an area they won't come in, they can pull you in. South Carolina, you cannot. Uh, if you've got an area, recently we had a request out on Fox Play Road, a large tract of land. If he wants to come into town, and we welcome him to come into town. Uh, the mayor saw a long time ago, how can we annex better? That was one of the reasons that we went down the railroad track, took in the highway and you see this and people coming in. Uh, we've got the ability that if people want to come in, they can come in, but you cannot make them come in. And I'd like to see you personally through the law change.
Um, I'm also familiar with the law and I agree with Mr. Hargreaves, wholeheartedly, um, that we as citizens need to contact the legislators and get that law changed. Because as far as my knowledge and what I know is that some of the, the hands are tied by current council members with being able to go after certain areas. I'm also very familiar with some of the lines and he is, he is right. Um, you can drive on one street and have, you know, two streets completely annexed, leaving everybody around it. Of course, you want to grow, we have the highest miller rate in the Corey County. Of course, you want to bring more people in to share that miller rate. Um, but at the same time, part of me also agrees with, um, Mr. Graham. I think that we have a lot of work to continue to do and to get Lawrence to take care of doing what we have now. And I think that before we take on too much, that we need to make sure that everything we have now is great. Even better than what we have now. And so we have some problems to take care of.
Um, the pros for annexation obviously are bringing in, um, more tax money for the cities. But we have to make sure that we can provide things such as the police needed for those citizens to maintain the safety, the fires, the water. Um, and some of those areas right now, I think are stretched pretty thin. Um, and we need to focus on strengthening those before extending out to something that we, you know, beyond what we can handle. Um, but there are ways to kind of work to get some other resources to help what we currently have in place, to get some funding, um, to help the public safety be able to do their jobs better by providing them with some things that they need to, um, better protect our citizens. But you have to look at both sides with most all of these issues, the pros and the cons. And are we ready to take on more or do we need to work on what we're already have?
Um, of course, and I agree with the members, uh, and on the way to tax base, uh, ag- uh, agmatization is, is a method of doing that. But I think we have some serious infrastructure problems that we need to work on first. And that, that requires a lot of our energies. And, uh, one is that I think it's going to be individual, uh, each one will have it. We will take it one, one individual, uh, case at a time. But we have so many serious infrastructure problems, I think, that, that we need to work on those before we think about whether we want to, because it has to be at advantage to them. And we need to work on those infrastructure problems.
Annexation, from my understanding, is an individual private property owner's right to choose to be in or out. So we need to assess it on a per-case basis, how it affects our city. And is this a plus or a negative for our city? Um, I don't believe we, uh, what it has said, enforce anybody according to our state laws right now. Perhaps in some time, create a good can change that. But for right now, we just need to assess it on a per request basis.
I think pretty much everything is been said about annexation. And state law is not a factor of municipality's annexing properties. It almost boils down to each individual property owner has to ask to be annexed in the town. It's not quite that stringent, but almost. But you do, you have an annexation request, you do have to look at it and do a cost benefit analysis. Is it going to cost the city a lot of money if this property is brought into town? Or is it going to be beneficial to the city? And, and that's the analysis that it all boils down to. In most cases, I think we find annexation will be beneficial to the city. Maybe not today, but twenty years down the road maybe. Because it may be an undeveloped piece of property and one day growth will happen there. Perhaps a housing development or an industry or something will be built there. And if it's annexed as a vacant property, that property is in the city. When that growth occurs, the tax base grows because of that property being annexed now. But the growth might come a year down the road. Annexation is important. We've got to keep our eye on it to ensure that our community does thrive.
What do you think could be done to improve communication between council and public?
Uh, one thing definitely, uh, we're, we're in, it's 2015. Uh, we're in sore need of a website for the city. I know, I think the current administrator or part-time administrator is working on a website. Uh, but it hasn't, hasn't come to fruition yet. That's definitely something we need to continue to pursue, um, as well as continuing our, uh, advertising in the local papers. We definitely need to take care of that because those are our local businesses that contribute to the city. But, uh, the internet is here and it's not going anywhere. So we may as well take advantage of it. Uh, you can do things like have forms available on there. Um, our, our city ordinances can be available on there where somebody doesn't have to go up to city hall and, uh, look at a paper copy. Uh, we're, I mean, we have situations where it's hard to even get an email sent sometimes within our city government because of lack of, uh, use of technology. So it's here, it's not going anywhere. We don't have any choice in that. So we may as well embrace and take advantage of it.
I do agree that technology can help with the communication. Chief Shepherd recently started emailing us concerning, uh, things that happened within the city that we would have a right to know and perhaps, uh, we could communicate that with our citizens. And that's going to plus. It's been refreshing to get emails from our chief of police to know about things that are going on within our city. So, uh, technology is there and we can definitely, um, step up the use of that in communicating, uh, with ourselves and with the citizens.
I do feel that we need to build greater communication with our city. We are taking some things. We have developed, uh, a new website or worked on a new website. And then even when you look at this building, this building just wasn't come about by just the city getting together. We've had some citizens in our city, two of them said it here now, has, in council meeting, has shared their opinions about the police station over and over again. And those communications really helped us push and move this situation. So as the chamber grows and builds greater communication, the city builds greater communication. And then we, as we get involved and join community with the city and other entities and doing projects, we will bring a greater communication and a greater care for our city, one with the, with another. So I think greater communication is coming. We just need to set that path.
I'll reiterate what it's all it says, uh, basically the internet and like Mr. Dobson's been trying to get it up. He's got the basics down. He's trying to build and get his departments. But, uh, but one of the best things I would recommend to everybody is to come to the city council meeting. I've been there for twenty years. I would have wanted to request the mayor, his all department head be at the city council meeting. So I've never been able to vote, but I've been there twenty years of them. And, uh, most of the times the council chambers are, uh, have plenty of seats available. It's only unless it's a hot topic that we have open web presence. They're always welcome to come to it.
Um, I agree. A website can be utilized for so many things. There was a website when we first moved into town, um, it wasn't kept up and then it went away. Um, I know that Mr. Dobson is working on one, but it can be utilized for water payments, newsletters, recreation, communication, um, for our games. Um, I have been attending the meetings, my husband's been attending the meetings and that is one thing. Not everybody can go to meetings and people have families and children at home. Sometimes lucky nights are not always convenient. But, um, you can work with the chamber and do some of the revitalization things and ideas that I've seen work really well in other cities. Um, with the first Thursday, first Fridays and third Thursdays. Um, you can have annual or semi-annual town hall meetings or community get-togethers. Of course, we have the bog off and that's a big community get-together, but we have a lot of people coming to our city. And it's not just us. Um, but we could do something that's maybe just for our community, our annual community get-togethers.
Um, this is a complex question. I see it more than just a website. Um, I think one part of that question may stem from just communication, from hearing citizens and their concerns and council members being open and accessible to the citizens and then in turn responding to their concerns, following up. I think that's an issue in that question. Um, obviously, council members and mayors need to, um, you know, communicate clearly, um, re- return the phone calls, follow up. And I think, you know, a lot of times that does happen. I do agree that, um, there are a lot of things in our town, not just with the city council, but that citizens aren't aware of. So using various methods, technology, websites, social media. I know, um, the Chamber of Commerce does a great job with that, promoting things that are going on, um, newspapers. I just, I think that sometimes especially recently, since I've gotten more involved, people just feel, um, like they don't know what's going on. So just their communication with what, what does happen and making information more accessible to the citizens.
I would just like to add to that by saying that the website, uh, needs to also have the meeting. Uh, you have subcommittee meetings and, uh, they should be public also along with amendments from a regular meeting. Uh, we also should have an active website. What an active website does is, is, it should be updated daily. Uh, you can also, it should be able to, if you have a complaint for the mayor or something that you need to have attended, somebody should respond to you within twenty-four hours. But one thing I want to say, I'll reiterate that I would be a full-time manager, uh, full-time mayor. I like to set up an office so you can have office hours. And I, I just want to say, you have to have open communication and part of that being transparent.
Part of my plan for the city would be to, during, let me step back. In campaigning and meeting with local businesses, we have a number of local businesses in town that unfortunately do not, the owners do not reside within the city. And they feel that they don't, their voice isn't heard. Perhaps part of my plan, we can include a new committee where we bring in business members to work with council members and discuss their needs and help to develop and grow the business community. Because business members here, they, there are many of us that, not myself, but there are many that do not have residence in town, but they feel that their, their needs aren't heard. So perhaps we can incorporate a new committee to work those things together. And then as far as electronic media, we are in the age of social media. We have things like Facebook and Twitter, Pinterest, all these things that are accessible, that are used readily from our children that perhaps maybe we can include into the city government.
Well, the key to making city government work is communication, no doubt about that. Communication amongst the city council, with the mayor, with department heads, city employees, and with you, the citizens. The electronic media gets, gets dominant today. We need to do a better job of our website and our administrator is working on that right now. Just have it up and running and be a, a full-fledged website. Our old website didn't hopefully work too well. We had to take it down. But our new website should be, be much better and he is working on that. Communication is the key. As I said in my opening remarks, I'm not here in Lawrence, been here all my life. Anybody that has a question or a concern, call me or come see me in my office. I'm there, there for you, there to listen. Um, it comes to council meetings as well. Communicate with us. Let us know during that public comment period what your concerns, your questions, your ideas are. If you know how to do something better or got a good idea, which you can jump on board and check out, let us, let us know. But communication is really the key to making this whole thing work. And the electronic age is here. We need to capitalize on that. And just the old-fashioned communication amongst our sales is as important as anything.
Next question. The recent extreme rain event caused losses of homes, crops, and roads in parts of South Carolina. How can a city prepare for extreme weather?
Uh, if you watch any of the national news, uh, keep up current events, it's not hard to see that, uh, the experts really think this is going to continue to be a trend. We're going to continue to have bad storms. We've been blessed for many, many years. Anybody that's been here more than seven or eight years can know that we're long overdue for hurricanes, which is generally when we have these big extreme weather events. We have to get ahead of these things. Uh, we can't be reacting to the issues when they happen. Um, I spoke with a resident over on Forest Drive. I know there was some issues of some water coming up directly behind houses, almost in houses. There's a canal or creek stream, whatever you want to call it, behind Forest Drive, that, uh, potentially... that potentially didn't get kept clean. We know we have, also have antiquated culverts running beneath some of those roads. And we know that's not a simple answer. That's a, that's a complex answer. You're going to shut roads down. Some of these are dead end roads. People can't get out and in and out of their houses to repair them. But we can control keeping the canal clean. We may just have to ask permission. I know it's not city property, but I, I wonder have we went and asked permission from these people to get in there and clean these creeks out?
Mr. Turner and the Public Works Department have done an outstanding job over the year and prevent, because of their work, preventative maintenance. And because of that hard work, many people did not suffer the damage they might have suffered from our recent rains and floods. We need to continue to do preventative work. We need funds. Money can be perhaps appropriated from grants that are maybe more and more accessible now that this becomes such a problem, such a larger problem. And there are studies such as the Corps of Engineers and other professionals that could provide us expertise with identifying the problems and telling us what needs to be done and help to get funding for this problem.
In some areas of our city, flooding is a problem. But when you talk about flooding, you also must talk about dollars. Cleaning the ditches, that maintenance, that will help amount of flooding. But I think some of the flooding that really hurts the hearts of some of our citizens, to solve that problem is going to be dollars. We have had some studies. First of all, I want to say to the cities, don't think that the, that the town is not caring. Don't think that studies have not been done. But what has to be put in place is flooding. We have one area, I think Corps of Engineers told some things to cost about a million dollars. So somewhere down the line, we will have to start putting some monies aside, putting some money in place to do something. This could be higher taxes at least. It may be in your area. I may think it's not my area and not worried, but it's a task that each person will have to take hold of. So that is something that we have to work out and move forward to build it out of citizens.
Like I said earlier, I've been here 63 years. I can remember when Forest Drive hit dirt roads. If you drove down, you better have a record. I've seen waters on Maple Street, knee-deep. I've seen water on Red Buck Road during Hurricane Floyd go into the woman's house. I kept a camera and said, man, you got to move. But recently, this past year, the mayors and city workers have done the best job of cleaning out the ditches and making the water move. You know, I've seen, like most of them, when it rained and poured down everything, you were looking out the window. I was in the middle of it with the mayor and Robert, Don Brown. And I kept telling them, I said, I have never in my life seen the water move the way it's moving down that canal when I went on the spring through. No house, by knowledge, flooded in Lawrence this past time. It got mighty flooded. In the past, we have not even got a flood training network for us. We're on the right track.
I was active and looking at the storm at my home. My home is over in front of Bryant Street, but Forest and Millian is behind me. The home, the old boy house behind me was flooded. The entire yard was flooded. It was probably, it would have been knee-deep when I walked behind there. I do have one of the ditches that run right beside my house. My husband and I had been very diligent in cleaning that out and burning it. He just helps assist with that. We are not the only city that has, has to have, has to face these when the inclement weather approaches or is yelling. Conway was very affected. My family's hometown itself was very affected and my brother did lose his shop and home during that, that storm. So I think being proactive with a, a, a long-range proactive plan to continue the maintenance that has been started by the Public Works Department and keeping up on that frame will help us continue to help our citizens.
I think it's a, an issue in some areas of our town, not waiting until the storm's coming to start preparing. I know that I've helped us some citizens and they feel that there are some tiles and ditches that need to be replaced that haven't been replaced since the eighties. The culverts need to be looked at. Cleaning out the ditches and making sure that there is free water flow, not just pushing some branches and leaves and debris back to create the water flow, letting it go. Because eventually if you leave that debris there, it's going to come back and clog it back up again. Those are some issues and just continuing to work on it, not daily, but on a regular basis. Not when Jeff Gaski says, alright, we're getting ready to have the great flood that we haven't seen in, you know, years and years and years. And then if there's a funding issue, obviously those things cost money. Looking for outside sources, not necessarily increasing tax dollars, but there are programs and funding elsewhere that can be researched and help make some of those improvements working with the state and the county.
One of my campaign promises was to set up a committee to look into getting funding for those areas. We did, I think we do have some houses that, that work flooded. So we're going to have to look at those areas and in a way, we're glad that this happened at this time so that we can take the proper steps. But I'm, I think we should form a committee of those people, some of the people in those communities, pull out that Corps of Engineers study, work with FEMA, get a FEMA representative to help us. If we could go to the county or state and look to get some grant funding because it's going to be a tremendous amount of money that's going to, that we're going to need based on what I saw.
The issue with storm water management is a citywide issue, a county issue, it's a state issue. It's our own personal issue here. We need to continue the work that our Public Works Department does and continue that on a routine maintenance. We also need to work with property owners and easements. And there are many areas where we just cannot get the equipment in because of whether it be overgrowth, this neighbor decided to put bushes right up against it and this one didn't, or they both have. So it's an easement issue in some regards. Some regards, it's a culvert issue. There's a significant bottleneck that occurs on Circle Drive. That's going to take work with SDOT to manage that, to get the proper equipment in there to handle that culvert, put a larger sized diameter tower in there to help control the flow of water in that area. And I believe with continued due diligence, we can manage this. Unfortunately, at some point, it may come down to storm water fees on, on the citizen.
When I grew up, I was in Boy Scouts and our motto was be prepared. I think that's what this boils down to. We need to be prepared for when the next storm comes. By that, I mean continue the maintenance program that we instituted to clean out the ditches and keep them clean. Mr. Hardy was right. I've been living in Lawrence all my life. I'm 53 years old now. And I've seen a summer shower come in the road, Circle Drive, Millian Street. And we're both in the Circle Drive and Millian Street flood just because of the summer shower. 25 years ago, we had the rain that we had a few weeks ago. There would have been a lot of damage on Forest Drive and Circle Drive and a lot of damage in this town. So the situation's better than it was. We just got to be prepared for the next storm and keep our maintenance up. There are some issues that need to be addressed with DOD regarding culverts and possible bridges in certain areas. We're working, working together with the DOD and with the county. And if we have to bring in a Corps of Engineers with some advice, we can certainly sit down. We're working together and being prepared for the next storm. We should be able to relieve any flooding issues that we have in town there.
That brings our question period to an end. We will now conclude with summaries from our candidates, starting with this one. Please keep your remarks to two minutes.
Well, again, thank you for coming tonight. As I stated in the beginning, I served on the city council for a number of years. I have done my best over that course of service to educate myself and become familiar with the operations of the city of Lawrence. And I've tried to, tried to do my best. I've tried to apply my common sense and apply my knowledge to make the best decision that I possibly can for the entire city of Lawrence. I look forward to continuing my service to the city. I hope to serve as your mayor for the next four years. I promise you that if I am elected mayor, I will listen to your concerns. I will evaluate our options that we may have in making the decision and gather the knowledge that I need to gather before making that decision and then do what's best for the city of Lawrence. We are a council form of government. My job is to set the agenda and hopefully guide the council, but I can't do it by myself. I have to do it with the cooperation of council because the action we take has to be in the majority of the other city council. I'll do my best to work with council, work with the citizens of Lawrence and do the absolute best job I can and seek guidance from God to make this city progress. Thank you.
In recent years, Lawrence has experienced increasingly challenging problems, which many have suffered occasionally and personally. As mayor of Lawrence, I will lead the city council in a new direction. Together, we can develop the first citywide plan in several years with a new vision of detailed blueprints for our city's future. We can unite our citizens behind a central cause, the revitalization and redevelopment of our city. Instead of maintaining status quo, we can reach new heights by promoting existing businesses, recruiting manufacturing, developing public safety, and securing necessary officials to make this city a success. As citizens of Lawrence, we deserve to be proud of the appearance of our, of the appearance and our opportunities that the city affords. As mayor, I commit to making this city thrive financially and relationally. I believe that if you elect me as your mayor, I can get the job done by not just providing short-term solutions, but by establishing long-term plans and goals in conjunction with our city's vision for a better future. Thank you.
As mayor, I bring to the city of Lawrence a strong business and finance background. I made several campaign promises to a lot of you out here in the audience and I plan on keeping those. One of the key things I talked about was having a city town hall meeting in this very same building. This is a beautiful building. We talked about being open and transparent. We want you to come out and express yourself in a very relaxed, happy student. I think this will be one of them. I am retired and I have more time and energy to be mayor. I think the first nine days of my administration are going to be very, very important. I'm committed, I'm committed to having an office in the city from City Hall and having regular hours so that you can come and talk to me if you have personal problems. I, my, one of my hobbies is, is farming, having a garden, fishing. You'll see me out in the yard, you'll see me on the boat, whatever I'm doing. I think I'm very accessible and approachable and you can talk to me. I think one of the key things that I have is the fact that I have the energy, time to, to be an effective manager, to be a person that can hold our city government accountable. What we have is an opportunity. And this is the opportunity our motto and my campaign has been moving forward together. And I think this community is ready to move forward. We're going to have a new administration. And I thank the mayor for one good job that he's done and I'm looking forward to working with Ms. Martin.
Thank you all for coming tonight. This is an exciting opportunity. Many people have stopped me and said, what in the world makes you want to get involved in this? And I just laugh. They say, you know, why are you wanting to get involved in politics? I'm not a political person. I'm not really interested in politics. I don't see myself that way. I just develop such a strong sense of love for this community and the people in it and the youth and in my educational profession. I just want to offer them so much more for them, for their teachers. But to be successful, Lawrence needs to cultivate a strong and diverse leadership that is inclusive, collaborative, and connected, both with the council, the mayor, the citizens, the business owners. We need to identify what our unique assets in Lawrence are, create and implement a strategic plan and follow through with that in partnerships with community members and other stakeholders for our city. Additionally, I understand that we need to be financially responsible and encourage a business-friendly spirit with individuals to help companies flourish. History has proven that it is possible to do this and together we can achieve even greater success. And my hope is that on council, that we can focus on moving our city forward and to an even brighter future than what we already have. Thank you for coming tonight.
I'm not a politician either. I don't want to be a politician. I want to provide a public service to the city of Lawrence and that is my goal. As I began this campaign, many people that did and did not know me or may not, may not know my husband, but didn't really know me, they wanted to know why I was running for council. And after that question was, because you're not from Lawrence and you're, you're not born and raised in Lawrence. Well, I consider myself a peer special because I wasn't born and raised in Lawrence. But my husband and I chose Lawrence as a city to live and purchase a home. So I feel like since I made that choice, anytime you have a choice in something, you're more actively, actively involved in it. And I feel like me and my husband are ready to take the next step. He is very active and I want to be more active. Lawrence is a great place to live and work. I've seen it stabilize a little bit even in the five years that I've been here. We've got a lot of work to do. I'm ready to help bring some of my experiences and my business background to the city of Lawrence to help make it grow even more. I would like the opportunity to think outside the box and bring different ideas to the city of Lawrence and I appreciate all of you coming here tonight to know us. Thank you.
Thank y'all for having us tonight and glad we had a great turnout here. I want to maybe touch base on a couple of things and questions you didn't get asked tonight, but I know the council is headed in that direction, but we definitely need to be able to try to get the administrator position still as quickly as possible. The biggest of the waters are right around the corner for all of us to make. And definitely we got to have a seat in turn. We're having to make decisions out there sometimes and don't know exactly where we're standing on some legal issues and maybe hesitate on what we are doing. One thing I would like to see is kind of a decision on what type of the recreation we can do with the children. Last year, we did not have a basketball program. And we need to make a decision on that end or whether we have to go forward with the grants and acquire additional properties and not necessarily just for children, but for adults with knee-deep wounds, with knee-deep injuries. We need, we need to get some future, like some of our adjacent children and also for the citizens. And one other issue that seems to be a hot topic we didn't get discussed tonight was how much money we spent on the water system. They were pretty pumped in that pump segment. We've had that thing there for three years. And a very, somewhere in the neighborhood of $135,000 we've taken. I don't quite understand that. Maybe you should pump them, come close tomorrow, but we definitely need to fill it out and get it working quick if we can. Just continue your work with the Chamber of Commerce and you can also develop a board and bring every industry and every job that we can possibly bring to Lawrence. Glad to see tonight that everybody behaved and had their act of service. Everybody on here wants to watch this for Lawrence. Y'all got the big decision of who you want to vote for. That's all up to y'all. Thank y'all for coming.
I'm excited about the future of Lawrence. I'm excited about the energy that's in this room tonight. Thank you so much for coming and expressing your ideas and asking your questions. In the last few months, we've had standing room only, council meeting attendance, a lot of energy flowing, some murmuring. But all of that is because you love Lawrence and I love Lawrence. And the future is exciting. And it's exciting because we have young people, younger people that can bring that energy and that vitality and all your business experiences and other experiences that you bring to the table. We can do it together because you all love Lawrence. We love Lawrence and thank you.
I was really surprised there wasn't more questions about the Recreation Department and public safety. In my opinion, the long-term fix to the vast majority of our problem is focusing on our youth, revitalizing that Recreation Department, trying to attract a YMCA or Boys and Girls Club, get these kids that maybe have idle time, we know what happens in idle time, and keep them busy so that they can be prosperous citizens when they get to that age. Mr. Hardy spoke on the lift station out there at Baber. That's one thing that, it's just an example. And I don't think it's any one person's problem or any one person's fault. That thing's been there for 37 months. We pay $3,700 a month. We pay $3,700 a month in rent, which is in the ballpark, like you said, $135,000, $136,000 that we basically put into a Band-Aid instead of a solution. We're not getting that money back. That $137,000 is gone. If any of you have ever rented anything, they don't give you any of that money back at the end of it. This is an extraordinary city, good people. For the first time in our existence, we are potentially leaving this place in worse shape for our kids than we found it. In the past, it's always been left in better shape for our kids than when we found it. If we want to make a change on that, this election's important. We've got to get the right people in office. I promise you I'll be honest, no nonsense. I'm not a politician by any means. Any of you that have talked to me in this process will know that I'm not. But I do assure you, I will be honest. I'll keep your best interest rooted in all my decision-making. And I'm going to do the right thing. That's basically where I'm at. I'm going to do the right thing in every decision I make.
Again, to the League of Women and citizens, I thank you for this opportunity. I close by saying I have thirty years of pastoral experience, thirty years as a teacher, twelve years on council, many other civic duties. I have spent all my life working with people. I have spent much time talking with all of our older business persons here in Lawrence. And I have found that you can't do everything, but you do little by little. I've found that when you work with people, sometimes you have to say, "You can't give something though they want it." And sometimes you can give even when they don't want it. So I promise you, if I go back in council, we'll work hard. We've got a new railroad coming. We'll join hands with them to try to build greater industry, bring more industrial to the city. We've got an industrial park that's growing. We'll continue to work with that, work with economic development to grow that even greater. We will continue to work with our recreation. And I would say this, Lawrence has been my home all my life. Our businesses have always, baby, all of those old ones. I remember the organization I was in in high school, my children playing games. They have always done what was best to make life better for our children. We will continue to do that. We can have a greater recreational park. Yes, we don't have a gym, but we can form some partnerships to make that work. If we can't afford it, there is some partnerships that we can do to make it work. I believe that we can have a walking area. I believe that we can have a bicycle area. I believe that even we can have a park of our own. All we have to do is lay the plan, continue to work, and little by little, do a little each year, and we will get where we want to be.
The Ori County Legal Women's Voters would like to thank the candidates for their participation and offer service to the City of Lawrence. We would also like to thank the voters who've been engaged and participating in the democratic process.